Colonel Kirk, may I have, we have a roll call please.
Commissioner Coats.
Here.
Commissioner Laird.
Present.
Commissioner Mill.
There.
Commissioner Nicholas Nicholson.
Wow.
Chairman North.
Here. At this time, um, we're gonna go ahead and just open up with a word of prayer to serve with. So, Mike, if you would come and lead us in a word of prayer and then we'll say the pledge of allegiance after that. If you'll come up and turn on those things on, that way it's on the record. We can hear you, but unfortunately, if anybody's listening in, they won't be able to unless it's, that's not on. Push the button. There you go.
Okay, very good. Thank you, it's a pleasure to pray with you and I commend the commissioners in, uh, doing this, invoking God's will and pleasure, so if you'll pray with me. Lord, in Jesus' name, I come to you, thanking you for the opportunity to bring our petitions and our praise to you, the only Savior. And Lord, we understand that the commissioners are here doing business and Lord, they need your wisdom and I pray that they'll seek it. Lord, we know that you look down the corridor of eternity and see all things. We are limited, so we trust you to see the things that we cannot or would not. And Lord, we understand that it's easy sometimes. As humans, we ask you to take away this and take away that, but Lord, it's those, uh, challenges, of life that actually are used to shape us to the image of his Son. But Lord, today, uh, those who are with us pray that you'll meet their needs. And Lord, we, we do know this for sure, that your thoughts are higher than our thoughts and your ways higher than ours. So today, may we find our way to look to you and find those ways to do, uh, your will and to shape us to you. And Lord, thank you again for our Savior, who, were it not for him, we would all still be east of Eden. And we thank you in Jesus' name.
Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you, Mike.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which is the first and last one nation and justice for all. All right, at this time, we will, uh, removing the agenda, we're gonna move up the proclamation for International Museum Day. Whereas Nautrona County is the home of numerous museums, art galleries and historic sites and whereas the institution promotes the study and appreciation of history, art, material culture and the natural world and whereas they contribute to the quality of life enjoyed by the people in Nautrona County through their exhibit activities and programs and whereas these institutions are a valuable partnership to our area schools, homeschool community and Casper College by providing unique educational opportunity and whereas they share our, our region's unique history, culture and landscape with visitors coming from around the world and whereas the International Council of Museums has designated May 18th as International Museum Day. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Nautrona County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize the museums, art galleries and historic sites of Nautrona County for their contributions to our county and encourage residents to visit these institution sites. Madam Court, Clerk and Sheriff, if you'd like to come forward.
Mister Chairman, Commissioners, uh, thank you very much for giving us time today to have a discussion, so, um, you know, with the recent changes that the, uh, Nautrona County Legal Department, uh, going from a staff of five to a staff of one, um, and our daily duties as elected officials in this county, uh, we depend on those services and that legal advice and guidance on a daily basis. Uh, so essentially what we're, we're, uh, here for is to seek understanding of the direction forward and, uh, and how we continue to receive those services and, uh, and you know, what, what does the path forward look like and, and essentially what the timeline is.
Jill, did you have a question too? Okay, okay. We are interviewing, uh, two candidates, uh, this afternoon for the county attorney position and we're hoping that things move forward in a, in a quick manner. Obviously, we have been in this position four, two years ago, if you remember right, we got down to one attorney for, for a while as well, so, um, all I can do is we can work with counsel and do what we can, make sure that you're not deficient in what your needs are, uh, whether that means that we have to look at outside assistance for a short amount of time while we're trying to get restaffed or whatever we do. Um, that is not something that the commission has specifically addressed yet, um, since we did have at least full staff two weeks ago or week and a half ago, so, at this point in time is something that the commission hasn't met, obviously, since that all happened, so we're gonna, we will be looking for, in a forward manner, make sure that you have what you need, make sure that you can get your, your job accomplished as well. I know Lita has been looking into different statutes, different requirements as far as how and what we have to do, um, as far as getting outside counsel. And I'm gonna refer to Lita on some of that information, is just, just as far as the information that you've discovered so far.
Well, with respect to the prosecuted, prosecution of the involuntary commitments, we do have a contract attorney on board. We started, I guess, transitioning that role to her Monday afternoon and there are other statutes that give, I forget about that, give the commissioners the ability to hire additional counsel for different reasons.
So we at least do have somebody on that's taking over the Title 25, so that'll alleviate a lot of that, uh, that time constraints that we've had, cause I know that varies depending on the day, but that does take a pretty good chunk of change or chunk of time each day, so. I wish I could give you any more specifics, but right now, I don't know what other specifics we actually have, as, other than, we will work with you and do what we can to make sure that you have what you need.
I have a comment.
Commissioner Laird.
I have talked to a law firm or two to see if they would be able to represent us until we get restaffed, so that we have lawyers that you can talk to, I haven't discussed this yet with, uh, other commissioners, I may have mentioned it from time to time. We have in the past and, and are now have, have hired attorneys from outside the county attorney's office, uh, done it on two separate occasions, one, the case is finished, the other one, the case is ongoing, um, and so there are attorneys who have told me at least that they would certainly consider handling things on an interim basis, have no idea about cost or any of that, don't know whether the other commissioners would even agree to it, but it's something that, uh, that, uh, has been an idea that has, depending on whether we have a flood of attorneys supplying for the job, so far, I haven't seen any flood, so.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, I certainly appreciate all the efforts from the entire commission and, and nothing that, uh, that, that I have to say today should reflect poorly on the performance of Lita. Um, she's really trying to, to pick up the volume and the capacity that that office deals with and, uh, and I appreciate that, so, um, I don't want anything to reflect on that. Particularly, my concern is capacity itself, there's, uh, this is a large county, large population, there's a lot of work that goes on, uh, the state statutes are very specific on the duties of the county attorney, uh, I certainly don't want to, uh, impede or infringe on any of those statutory duties, um, but I do have a vested interest in, uh, in the, the ability to, uh, receive efficient and effective and timely legal advice, uh, to make sure that the decisions I'm making as the sheriff are in line with the Constitution and, and civil rights and protecting those for our citizens. Um, at, at the executive level of law enforcement leadership, that's very important to have, uh, legal advice and, uh, command staff that are up to speed and knowledgeable on, on everything that can be, so, um, I would propose to you, uh, and you may see it in my, my budget letter as well, but I'm offering, uh, to you that I would take on a, an attorney on staff at the sheriff's office and, uh, that would be outside of, of the duties that are delegated to the county attorney, uh, those are time-consuming, uh, legal matters like revealing contracts, agreements, grant proposals, uh, grant documents, um, there, there's a lot of research that goes on, uh, myself and my staff, we, we really try hard and we put a lot of effort into, uh, staying current with legislation changes, case law changes, which, you know, I think everybody on this commission understands that case law changes sometimes daily and, uh, and then once those things change, that has to, uh, have the appropriate effect on our operations and our policies and procedures and getting all that into place, you know, including the, the training component, so there's certainly a need that exists for, uh, daily legal advice at the sheriff's office and, uh, I think, you know, beyond, uh, just the personnel, the filling of the vacancies, uh, your new county attorney is gonna have a significant lift in building a team, a culture, uh, and being effective in, in what they do, so their department works well and that's gonna take some time. And, uh, I do have some, some experience and some success in that, uh, in that realm, uh, but it would be a significant, um, lift for the county attorney to get all that done in a short period of time, regardless of the, the caliber and qualifications of the attorney that you select, that's, that's tough, even for a great leader. So what I would offer is to bring somebody on at the sheriff's office where we have a successful culture, we have a good workplace and, uh, we've seen a lot of success in, uh, recruitment, hiring and retention and that would ease the burden and the workload on the county attorney's office.
Since we're having our first hearing, set of hearings or, or budget hearings coming up in two weeks, um, if you would, if you, if you'd put some stuff together in writing for us, for each of the commissioners to look at, you'll, you as well, so we have an idea of what we're looking at, um, it'll help us to evaluate where we're moving forward and now we're gonna get there, um, I'm not disagreeing with the climate in our county, our nation, our state, things have changed a lot. I know when Jill starts talking about how many different jury trials and everything else that we've got, the number seems to go up, I know the caseload for the sheriff department continues to go up for multiple reasons and, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm not denying that there's a need to have some, that we just have to figure out how, how we're going to address that need specifically.
Um, Mister Chairman, I would also, um, echo what John says, the district court, we have many legal issues that must be answered on the daily, they, they have to have fast turnaround, um, we have everything from policy to access to the record to issuing questions, we have five case systems that we're running in the office, um, rule changes, our new computer system with the case record, um, and so I appreciate also what you said about hiring for the county attorney's office and maybe in the short term, we can, um, get somebody on board to assist until things get solidified with the office.
Well, I know, I know it's gonna take a little bit of time, every one of us said the learning curve, we all, we are all very aware of, of how steep learning curves can be and transferring that load across and, and getting things done, so I do respect that and I, and I do understand the need and I do understand that both of your offices need that, uh, that ability to reach out to somebody and get that information in a short turnaround.
Also would, uh, just like to point out that sometimes the subject matter is that of which you cannot quickly explain, so it is good to have somebody that has the background and, um, you can quickly reference the topic and then quickly move to an answer or resolution, so.
Okay. Is the budget hearing gonna be quick enough for the two of you to be able to give us more information on that as far as what we need?
Mister Chairman, I think I can put some information, uh, together for you, but I, I would stress the urgency of this, uh, this is a, a daily occurrence, sometimes numerous times during the day, as a matter of fact, today I've, I've been in a conference, um, coincidentally, while we're speaking now, uh, my staff is sitting in on, uh, subject matter expert attorney, probably the leader in the country, uh, that is giving information on, uh, the latest case law changes and, and rules that are coming down for law enforcement, so, uh, these things happen daily, uh, at the same time, I think I've talked to Lita or emailed Lita three, three or four times today, that's just, just today. Um, so part of the, the interest of having an attorney on staff at the sheriff's office is to be able to develop a subject matter expert in, in things that have to do with law enforcement and particularly in the jail. Prisoner claims are, are one of the leading areas of civil litigation for governments, there's a lot of liability there, um, we're having discussions now about, uh, uh, current medical practices, those are changing, they're affected by case law, by doctors and what their best practices are and unfortunately, sometimes by politics, those are very hard to keep up, uh, on with a transient population of, of inmates that move through day and night, uh, and we're having those discussions right now, so this is, uh, probably, uh, a time, you know, that we're gonna need to, uh, decide on outside counsel, uh, whether, you know, within, within, uh, today or, or the next few days, because these are just compounding and, uh, and it's very important that I have the legal advice, uh, outside of the duties that are delegated in statute to the county attorney, there's a lot of discussion that happens in there, sometimes day and night, um, when, when questions pop up, uh, we're very good at, uh, most things in the legal realm, but as you know how complicated the world is in every situation, there's always things that are outside the box and in order for myself and my staff to make those decisions that are, are best suited to protect the citizens' civil rights, we have to have that type of, of legal advice, a sounding board to, to bounce that off of, um, so these certainly, you know, I, I'm willing to have this discussion later, I know the, uh, budget typically doesn't get approved until the second week of July, which is a long time from now and, uh, and I continue to have to make decisions daily and, and nightly and sometimes hourly, uh, that, that require legal advice, so, uh, certainly I wanna impose the sense of urgency on the board, um, to come up with a solution here, uh, I'm open to having, uh, you know, more lengthy discussions about a staff attorney, uh, but in the meantime, I'll certainly need to, uh, hire outside legal counsel if it exceeds the capacity of, of the legal department as it stands now.
Mister Chairman.
Mr. Mill.
Um. How you envision or whatever, even contract attorney stopgap, you two would be able to share that service, you think?
Um, Mister Chairman, Commissioner Millen, I think under both scenarios that we would be able to share that type of legal counsel, so if I brought a staff attorney on at the sheriff's office, that legal advice, that, that capacity would exist where we could help out the clerk of district court, uh, without a doubt and it's still a narrow focus, um, on what the law is and of course, I'm talking to a commission full of people, legal minds and, and that, uh, the, the law is huge, you know, there's a lot of disciplines in the law and, uh, and one of the problems of having a contract attorney is trying to make sure that we have a, a person that understands, uh, exactly the, the fine narrow scope of law that we're talking about and has some experience there and then we have that repetitive contact with them, so at two o'clock in the morning, if I have a constitutional issue, I wanna bounce it off somebody, I need to be able to call a contract attorney or a firm and talk to the same person that I have, uh, an understanding with and, and a relationship with, uh, that we can get those answers, you know, in a timely fashion, but, uh, uh, outside counsel, um, on a contract basis, uh, I think we've, we've located a few that, uh, that fit the scope of both of us.
Do you have some ideas then, for lawyers, outside of counsel?
Had a couple conversations, um, you know, they're kinda getting the cart before the horse, but, um, I certainly don't wanna, uh, you know, provide names of people that are in existing jobs and, and kinda ruin negotiations there, but, um, but I have had quite a few conversations, uh, also having conversations with Campbell County Sheriff and his legal advisor that's on staff at the sheriff's office there, they've had a lot of iterations of, of what that looks like through the years and of course, um, here in Nautrona County, we have an elected district attorney that's the prosecutor and, and an appointed county attorney, uh, so the, the dynamic is a little different than, than Campbell County, they have an elected county attorney who's also the prosecutor, uh, so the dynamics of that office look a little bit different, but the sheriff does have, uh, a legal advisor who's an attorney, uh, on his staff in his budget and, uh, and just had a conversation with them yesterday, uh, and she stays busy, she says I have forty hours or more, eight week, every week of work to do.
Mister Chairman.
Mr. Laird.
This is my comment, I, times have changed, I think it is time for you to have an in-house attorney and, um, we have to abide by whatever our statutory requirements are, I know Lita has looked at it, I've looked at it, we'll have to talk about that with the commissioners and I do understand your need for something to be done yesterday, believe me, and so, uh, hiring somebody to handle your issues right away, I think is imperative. Now, am I hearing that, that you, you would, you would be the one that would wanna interview him and decide who to hire and pay through your office?
Mister Chairman, Commissioner Laird, uh, is your question in reference to a staff attorney or, uh, outside counsel?
Um, yes, either or, or both, I'm in on both, so I get a better understanding of what you're thinking right now.
Sure, absolutely, um, well, I can tell you, we have a proven track record of, of, uh, recruiting, hiring and retaining good people, really solid people of all disciplines, um, of course, on my staff, there's a hundred and fifteen sworn officers, we're, we're currently up to staff, uh, on that and, uh, in total, there's a hundred and fifty-eight of us, so I have staff that's, uh, professional like nurses, there's thirteen nurses that, uh, that work there and what we do is we, uh, we have a recruitment strategy where we cast a large net and we, uh, we typically get quite a few applicants and we, we go through a process to choose the, uh, the one that's the best fit and, uh, that, that includes subject matter experts that are, uh, involved in that discipline and the profession, so if we're hiring nurses, then we have nurses, uh, included in the interview process.
Sheriff, four. Okay, one more question.
So, I hear the urgency, I, I agree with you, do you have the funds in your budget currently to do the outside or do you need assistance with, say, the commissioner's budget for professional services or something like?
Mister Chairman, Commissioner Millen, I do currently have, uh, unexpended funds remaining in the budget, I don't remember what the exact dollar amount is, I'd say in excess of five hundred thousand, uh, is a pretty safe bet, so I would have existing funds in my, uh, my fiscal year twenty-five budget to take care of those needs, both for myself and the clerk of district court.
I'd say do it then.
You would get that information written down, get it to Lita, pass it on to us as well, I'd appreciate it, um, we're in kind of a tight schedule this afternoon, cause we have several interviews and other things that we have to do, um, but if you'll do that, I'd appreciate it and then we'll have this further conversation.
Mister Chairman, I, I disagree a little bit, I think this is a pressing issue that we need to give, let them know that we're fine with them going and getting an attorney, uh, like the sheriff says, it's nothing against our remaining county attorney, but with isn't there and they need help, so they need to be able to go do what they need to do today. If he's got the funds, then go find somebody. Got any questions, you need legal assistance, that's all there is to it.
Mister Chairman, if I may.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to work with, uh, with Lita and, and, uh, develop what that looks like and use the existing funds left in my budget.
That's basically where I was going with that, I wasn't saying that you don't need somebody right away, I'm just saying we need to have that information before we move forward.
Thank you.
So, Commissioner Nicholson, did you have a statement?
Mister Chairman, um, thank you Sheriff, thank you Clerk, I appreciate, um, you coming before us today and going over the urgency of your situation, um, but I, I think I'll have to disagree with Commissioner Millen a little bit, I think there is more to it. Um, I, I feel that, you know, we have interviews of county attorneys today, um, county attorney candidates today, um, we have not spent time in executive session or open session or any session as a group talking about what our needs are and what our vision is, um, we've not had a chance to consult with our current acting legal counsel, um, I, I think it would be premature to, um, green light you, even though I appreciate you have existing funds, um, I appreciate this would be a, a temporary, uh, measure, um, but I think there are a lot of reasons that I'd like to visit with in, uh, executive session with, with commissioners, um, that might provide a little bit more, uh, information to them and then we can make an informed decision, so I would be, um, against moving right now, but I think we could by the end of our meetings today provide additional guidance.
Okay, does that make sense?
I think so, thank you.
Okay, all right, appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on. Mister Hagler, would you come up for just a moment? If you had an opportunity to read the resolution for the weight limits on Coats Road, uh, what are your thoughts?
Well, it's, it looks like it's outlined as per the statute, uh, this is the wishes of the commissioners, uh, seems appropriate, uh, and doable.
Okay, do you have any problem with doing the evaluation on that road to make sure that it? is capable of holding up behavior truck traffic or?
That that can be accomplished. We can take a look at that like this is in here for prior.
Okay, yeah, that's max, so. Okay, we got any comments from the commission in any of this?
How soon can you let us know? I'd like to see weight restrictions put on Coates Road. Soon as possible, personally.
Well, if we accept this resolution, I mean, that could be done, we have to get the signs made and get some locates and put sign up.
What time what timeframe we looking at here, get this all done?
Oh, probably two weeks if I can get the signs.
Thank you.
Do we have that resolution?
Yeah, it's it is.
Written copy here if you want to see it.
Ms. Chief.
Go ahead.
On this particular resolution, I'm going to declare a conflict and recuse myself from consideration of the weight limits on County Road five oh three.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Nicolason.
I don't want to interrupt Commissioner Millen, but it looks like maybe he's still looking at the resolution, so I had a couple of questions for Mr. Hagler.
Go ahead.
Mr. Hagler, what was the basis for the twenty-six thousand pound limit?
That's the the lightest loads, requires a CDL. The restrictions for the weight limit would be the lightest loads and it would still allow our our vehicles and other types of vehicles to go up there that weren't overweight. We would have an exception particularly for some of our, like our snowplow equipment. But most of your other type of vehicles that go up that road are delivery trucks, UPS, FedEx. They meet that requirement.
When were you last in front of us about a countywide, or at least not, maybe not countywide, but a larger scale overlay, was that in February?
Yeah, it's been a while, it's back in February, sometime in February.
So I haven't heard anything about this issue or seen this resolution since Friday when it was included in our packet. What has changed to look at it from just a Coates Road, County Road five oh three perspective rather than looking at other county roads?
Well, the direction of the last time I was before you, that we weren't going to look at any other county roads.
I thought you prepared a map that had other county roads with it.
I did, and the commission turned that down.
Okay, and so then the commission came back to you, or members of this commission came back to you and asked about County Road five oh three?
Well, five oh three's been asked about ever since the onset of the mining operations up there. Early on, it was asked to be restricted as well as the city has discussed that.
Okay, so are there concerns in your mind that would suggest that we do this now rather than do a full analysis of other county roads of similar and lesser and equivalent condition?
Oh, if that's, yeah, if that's what the commissioners want to do, I mean, that's what we tried to do with my original proposal. And I was still directed not to do that.
By whom?
The commission.
By the commissioners or all of us or just one of us or two of us?
The direction I had leaving here that day was, don't do it.
Concerns that we have, that we're trying to approach just this potential gravel pit operation, which I think is the only reason for this resolution, is that fair to say?
I believe that's true.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
I remember, right, the stuff that you brought for us before was basically a truck route proposal and that's and most of the items that you had in there were listed as a truck route. And this wasn't one of those roads that had that listed in there. And this commission did say, no, they didn't want to do that at that time. It wasn't just one person, it was it was the majority of the commission.
That's correct, Chairman North, it was a truck route proposal, was going to tie in with the city's truck routes. Encompass a number of roads, the main artery type roads, heavy traveled roads based on traffic counts.
Yeah.
And it was just a shot at some process.
Yeah. Mike, right along with that, I personally can't think of another county road that goes across the city where we have that we paid to put asphalt down on a low level or a thinner level. Can you think of another county road that's like that where we actually go across the city to start with to hit the county road? Because I know Squaw Creek's not like that.
No, it's it's not, I mean, the other roads we have tie in with YDOT system that are paved. Most all of our roads come off YDOT systems. This is unique in that the city owns the first portion of Coates Road as well as some of the residents were involved in helping to pay that as well as the city and the county.
So it's got, it's unique.
Yes, it is.
It's unique, it's not like the other county roads, the most part that we have in our system.
It is.
Okay. Commissioner Laird.
What seems to me to be the issue is since then, we declared that the mountain area where Coates Road exists was that there's going to be no mining allowed, you recall that, don't you?
Yes.
It's a zone for no mining. So it makes sense to me that we shouldn't let mining trucks go up there if we're not going to allow mining. It just seems like this natural thing to do, does that seem reasonable to you?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Chris Chairman.
Commissioner Mill.
If there's no mining being up there, then why would mining trucks go up there in the first place? Just out for a tour? Anyways, um. Why are you, there's exemptions for ag government and special, single deliveries on the road permitted on occasional and incidental basis, why are you carving out special permissions for specific? Why are you carving out the specials for ag and special?
There there could be some agricultural, say, somebody had a load of hay or a load of cattle that go up there, but that's not like fifty trucks a day.
A heavy trucks, though, a heavy truck, right? And we're talking about weight for restrictions.
We are.
So it doesn't matter.
You're also talking trip counts.
I know, but you're still calling, talking about weights. And that truck is going to still damage that road just as much as one of the gravel trucks if it's overweight. But I wonder, do we have any special permitting process or anything like that for any of our county roads?
We don't have anything like this.
Okay, so we don't have.
There were, there were ten ton limits on some roads when I first came here. Pathfinder, Cordis, I believe Buckham thirty-three.
And how would those trucks get down that road if they had that weight restriction there?
They they they, those weren't even enforced, I mean, I don't even know how they went up there, they were up before I came here. But it was just a sign that said ten ton limit.
It just, it seems to me that that right now we're addressing a problem that isn't there. Weights that it doesn't, it's, it doesn't matter, I know trip count, it does matter, I'm not arguing that. But weights do matter as well, you can have one truck that goes over and hits a soft wet spot and starts eating out that road.
Well, roads roads are designed for trip counts and number of loads. And heavy highways designed totally different, you know, like the interstate versus a secondary road or a county road, particularly a gravel road. Most of our gravel roads only have six inches of gravel on them and whatever the material is underneath that is probably virgin ground. Our paved roads normally have six and three, so three inches of paving on top of six inches of gravel. We haven't built any roads for heavy haul. You're familiar with thirty-three mile road and all the trucks that come from the mining industry out there. And it tears that road apart every year, the paved portion and the gravel portion. And it's an industry, you know, that's existing and has been there.
It sounds like we're carving special, special, I don't know, we're we're doing something for some and nothing for others.
Well, this is a residential area compared to like thirty-three mile. That is a major collector, you know, so. I would argue that there there isn't a gravel pit up there. And you don't want that type of traffic up there. So, you know, I don't know, you say, do you get the cart ahead of the horse, behind the horse?
Looks like a solution and looking for a problem. So, this is your mission, Laura.
This commission hasn't been well known for doing things in advance of a problem. Seems like many times we wait for the problem and then we try to solve it, just like the issue, one of the two or three issues we're facing now. But the, we all know what this is about, there is a secret about this. We 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 did change our zoning to say that there's no mining allowed in that area. Now, the issue is, is the government has leased the property to the trues to mine gravel. And that particular issue is in litigation. I have no idea how that will turn out. One of the things that the statutes say about mining is is that you can't have it within three hundred, mining operations, you can't have within three hundred feet of a house. So I've gone up and down Coates Road and there are a lot of houses that are within, I'm just going to guess, I didn't measure it, twenty-five feet of the road. So if a hundred and thirty thousand pound fully loaded truck comes up and down there two or three hundred times a day going by those houses, it's my belief that the statute may encompass the issue that if you can't conduct a mining operation within twenty-five feet of a house, the trucks may not be able to come down there anyway. Now, I don't know that, that'll have to be decided by the court also. So so the the issue that's that's out here now is to let everybody know what the people of Natrona County want in that area. There's a twenty thousand person signed petition up there throughout the county that they don't want mining in residential areas. So this is a pretty unique place in terms of of that mining issue. Well, the state doesn't own the county road. So if the state wants mining up there, they may be able to get it after the Supreme Court rules. But the state then will need to provide ingress and egress. And everybody knows that little road won't accommodate those size trucks and that number of trucks running per day for the next fifty years, just isn't going to happen. And so if we give notice now and get this done, then I suppose they can figure out another way to build and that's appropriate and paved to run their trucks up and down and won't destroy those neighborhoods. That's my personal feeling about the whole thing. So to say that we don't want to address it now is a typical way of handling things. And to argue that it, that that it isn't an issue, it is an issue. And it's one that this community is against. And so I think that it will be safe, I don't know what the city's going to do, I've talked to them and they're certainly considering about something, doing something with their little bit of paved road there. Because everybody knows that big trucks running that many routes every day back and forth during, and I'm told from six in the morning till six at night, is going to be a problem for the residents. And we have to make that safe and we have to let people know we're going to make it safe for those people. I I don't think they should have to suffer a big mining operation, thank you.
We're running a little bit behind, this was basically for the discussion portion of this. It is later on in the agenda and we'll see what the recommendations of the commission are at that point in time, so I appreciate it, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, the next thing on our agenda is Resolution thirteen dash twenty-five, urgency resolution temporarily freezing wind and solar applications for ninety days while planning and zoning has an opportunity to consider that. Do you have any discussion on that? Commissioner Mill.
Yeah, I'm not really sure where. Not really sure where this is the the project or the citizens' problem. This is a county problem. Why we would be punishing a group, an industry or two for our lack of foresight or ability to provide them services is absolutely ridiculous. We need to be able to be able to provide those services, I understand we don't have the the personnel, but we need to set a date, a firm date of when they are going to be able to come back for those considerations.
This does have a ninety day.
Ninety days, okay, so, right, so we hire somebody, that takes them maybe a month or two to get on board, get spun up. How far are we out? We need to have this problem for the citizens, for this county solved within, by next week or by next meeting. We need to have a long, potentially uncomfortable conversation about this. But to just kick it down the road for ninety days where nobody can do anything because we can't get our poop in a group is absolutely ridiculous. I cannot support a ninety day moratorium.
Okay. Commissioner Nicolason.
Ms. Chairman, this is another one that I had no notice of or knowledge of prior to being included in the packet on Friday. So certainly, I don't think it's a consent item, the commission hasn't considered it before. And I I I'm very familiar with moratoria, having worked with Congress County before and having been impacted or being one of the neighbors out on the Coal Creek Road when the wind resolutions were being instituted, I think in two thousand and eight or two thousand and ten. This, you know, what I see here is a resolution that's not supported by facts or the law. If we have changes to be made to the wind and solar or wind or solar or other changes, which I've heard just some suggestions that there are some changes that need to be made to the zoning resolution and you know, we we ought to and have planning and zoning address those and start working on those, and I'm not sure why they haven't, other than perhaps we haven't had a planner, but we have had an outside planning consultant, we have had a planning and zoning commission. I I don't think that we need to be picking winners and losers in the market either. I think that people can have their perspective on renewable energy. Some people think uranium's bad too, some people think that wind is okay, but solar is like the, you know, closest to the center of L. And I I I think that if we have a problem, then it needs to be articulated, we need to provide public notice, we need to have a hearing, we need to actually have facts. And then if moratorium is appropriate, which I think the case law is pretty clear, you only impose We need to actually have facts. And then if moratorium is appropriate, which I think the case law is pretty clear, you only impose a moratorium. Um, when there is a clear and present danger of um irreparable harm. Um, I, I don't think we have any of that at this point other than a lot of people may not like renewable power. So I, I don't think that's, it's appropriate to move forward with this today.
Commissioner Nicolason and I, Commissioner Melon also, it does say that this is a re- is to be sent to the planning and zoning. For their consideration of this. There will be a hearing at the planning and zoning. There will be over seeing this. We did notice that there was a lot of issues, working with Jared when he was here, that there was a lot of issues in our, in our current resolution. That uh leave more questions than they do answers. This is not a permanent. Resolution. It is short term and it's something so that we can work on our planning and zoning, get it corrected. That's what it amounts to. That's the whole reason for having a short-term moratorium is to get things done. It's not to do anything else.
Well, it's, it's to halt, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, it's to halt um any development or applications. And I think that we as a government. Need to be really careful about um absolutely precluding or foreclosing the opportunity of people who have made certain investments to move forward. Now, I personally don't have any knowledge of anybody that's right on the cusp of, of doing this. But I, I think the whole thing, you know, if, if Jared, our former um acting planning attorney and if Christie before him. Uh, if there were miscellaneous issues, whether solar or wind related or just zoning resolution related in general, I haven't seen a memo in two years. So I, I don't know if, if any of those concerns have been put down in writing. If so, I would have thought that they would have been presented to the commission long before now.
That's the reason why we were working on those, trying to go through them. And I do think that this is necessary while we get. Our zoning corrected until we can get some things itemized and, and look forward. Uh, it's not punishing somebody. It's a temporary stay. It is not saying that you can't ever do it. It's saying that we have issues that we need to look at and correct. And um. So Mr. Chairman, it's not punishing one group for a long period of time. It's for a short term. All things can be. Remediated and corrected. And that's what it amounts to. Commissioner Melon?
Um, you're, you're right. It doesn't punish one group. It punishes two. The um, I, I've got to be in agreement with Commissioner Nicolason. While I, I wasn't aware of this coming up until the packet, then uh some side conversation, it just. Wasn't including the. So we have a ninety day moratorium that we, we present to the planning board. Usually it goes the other way.
This is going back to, all this is doing is sending this back if you look at this.
So, so we shouldn't pass a resolution then. We should be, we should be giving them a recommendation to take a look at this. Then they pass it. If we're doing this because of the zoning, that's fine. But it, it's not just ninety days. We have the forty-five. We have all these public comments. We have the reviews. Um, I haven't seen anything of, of revisions or consideration of revisions or anything. Or the, for, to be to this point at this time. If there were problems, as, as he had said, I would hope for revisions. I'd hope that those would be shared amongst the entire board prior to coming to a zoning resolution. Stating a countywide resolution stating that can't do that operate, that industry in Natrona County anymore, go across the county line. I don't think this is the correct time for this resolution. I don't think it's the correct process. I think we need to. Give the zoning, planning and zoning a recommendation, give them maybe the status or, or the recommendations of. Of what you've come up with so far for, for solar and wind. That's fine. And then if they're in agreement, if they see the problems, if they see the benefit of those others. Put those, that moratorium in that then. You're stopping pro- you're stopping any industry in this county for those two. Right there, just stopping it or any interest in this county, which is a chilling effect, I'd say, for other. Economic development industries. Um, I mean, there's people that don't like so- solar and wind, cool. There's people that don't like uranium, yep. There's people that don't like oil and gas, yep. Where do we draw the line? We need to have recommendations before we can do a resolution in my mind.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nicolason?
Um, again, respe- again, respectfully, you've been the planning and zoning commissioner liaison, I think for the last two years and four months and. Um, you probably have a much better handle on perceived problems with our zoning resolution than I. And maybe in particular with respect to wind and solar and whatever else this resolution. Is, is reporting to cover. It says wind, solar and. And so I, I, I don't know if something, if that's just a typo, but in any event, um, I, I do have a concern with. Um, what may or may not be a problem and the limited um amount of information this commission, or at least some of the members of this commission have. On those issues that it really hasn't gone through the process, including having a staff report, having planning and zoning considerate, having a public hearing at that level. And then a recommendation to us and then um us doing something after a, a public, public notice and hearing. So uh, again, I, I agree that uh, that it's premature to be doing this.
The correction on the title is the emergency resolution temporarily freezing the acceptance of wind and solar applications while referring. Were referred to the planning and zoning commission for consideration. That is what the current, that's what it is. It is to refer it. I'm, I'm reading it right off here. I know this is, this is the updated. It's on your packets. It's in your packet on the computer. It is on your packet on the computer. Okay, we're, we're behind schedule right now. We do have some interviews. Um. Some personnel issues that we need to look at in executive session. So um, we will have time to discuss this a little bit further tonight. If it, if it be your recommendation, we can move, remove those from the consent agenda and vote on them independently. Or we can vote on them as a, on the consent agenda. We can discuss them at that point more.
Mr. Chairman. People matters should be voted on independently, separate from a consent agenda. I'd make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Mr. Chairman, it's a point of order. I, I think that if a commissioner requests something come off consent, it just comes off consent. That's my recollection.
Well, yeah, it comes off consent for an individual, individual vote. So yes, that is correct.
That would be true if we actually had a rule, but it's what we've done in the past.
Okay, so are you seconding that motion? Remove those from consent?
Mr. Chairman, I guess the point of order is that I don't think a ma- uh, a motion is either necessary or appropriate. Based on our practice of commissioners having the opportunity to pull items from consent to have them addressed as specific items.
We have voted on that in the past previously, so I'm going by historical information. Did we remove that? So, okay. Is everybody in favor of individual vote or taking those off the consent? Second. Yeah, consent agenda is, we'll, we'll vote on them independently. Okay. Okay, all right. So we have a motion to remove them from consent agenda in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. So, motion does carry. So we'll take those off consent agenda tonight and we'll vote on them independently. So with that, at this point in time, do we have a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters?
I so moved.
Do I have a second to go into executive session?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
...
Justin, would you, Advanced Casper like to come forward? Sorry, we're running a little behind. You were on time. I saw you come in early even. You were even here early. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I apologize for the small print.
Okay, gentlemen, introduce yourself and go ahead and let's get started.
Justin Farley, 3511, Carmel Casper, also the head of Advanced Casper. We're here this evening to discuss a BRC grant that we're doing through the Economic Development Joint Powers Board to the Wyoming Business Council in support of Barnum and a company called Radiant, which I believe all the commissioners are familiar with. The map that I have handed you, when you do get the glasses, you can see it. The blue is existing lines and the red and green are what we're proposing. The black, that's a proposed road. That would border the property and be a public road. So all the red and green, the red and green signify water and sewer. And the only thing that's not on this map is the existing water tower that's at the top of the map, the most north. We would loop that back in to the proposed water and sewer because we have another company that's wants to remain anonymous that's looking at the additional property out there. Radiant would be locating from that proposed road toward I-25, that section right there, about 130 acres. So what we're here tonight is that we have to have a match for this property, or excuse me, for the grant. That match is roughly 10%. So we are here to ask for up to a quarter of a million from the county commission to help support that match going forward. It's about an eight to nine dollars for every one dollar spent. So it's about nine million, eight to nine million that is being proposed. And so that's what we're here for this evening.
Any questions from anybody? Mr. Nicholas, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll leave out the math. Twenty-five million, twenty-five percent.
No, the total project is about eight million.
Okay, eight to nine.
Yeah.
And then 10% of that
Correct.
is the maximum you're
So we need about a million dollars total?
Eight hundred to a million dollars.
Okay, of which the county's portion would be roughly $250,000.
Yes.
Of not to exceed, or is that how you're saying it?
Yes, and we, I'll be at the Barnum this evening, making an ask of them as well.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, have any of the other municipalities been committed at this point?
You're the first. We haven't, we haven't had a formal sit-down with any of them to say
We don't like being the first ones. We really don't.
Well, because it's a county project, you know, it's, it's north of the town of Barnum, so we wanted to have the county be first. Advanced Casper, we haven't made an ask of our board, but we're willing to do that. Also, the Economic Development Joint Powers Board, we plan on approaching them. So we want there to be multiple stakeholders in this.
Are you planning on going to Casper and Evansville as well as Mills?
Casper for sure. I'm, we're on their calendar. I will just, and then Rural Water, I'm on their calendar for later this month. And then we're working with, getting on the, I'm gonna miss, but it's a sewer. Two twelve or some, another board?
Yeah, well, that, that is now operated by Barnum. That's all in their growth area up there.
Okay.
And that's something that regional water and sewer, that would be incorporated into their side of things. So Barnum is going to be the one that's gonna have the most skin in the game, game as far as this goes.
Sure. And the major benefactor.
Yes.
When, when would the funds be needed?
So we're breaking it down into phases and more based on milestones. So this first phase, which is the infrastructure, would be the first that would start, and we could do that in the, in the next year. Radiant has an appointment with the Idaho National Labs to test their reactor. Now, if that test goes through, that would be a milestone that then we would go and get additional funding. But that is not a part of this ask. Our, our plan is just, this is our ask. We wouldn't be coming back.
But Justin, how is Radiant willing to put any, anything into this? I mean, if they're, they're gonna be the beneficiary of this. And I mean, if you get, obviously, if we get this through the business council, that's gonna take care of the majority of this cost. But I know that they have come out and publicly said that they're willing to have skin in the game as far as this goes. Have you specifically asked them about that and how much they're willing to put forth on any of this?
So yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have had that discussion there. Again, in the milestone side of that, they're keeping the lion's share of that, those dollars for the development north of West Winds. But yes, I believe they would contribute a nominal amount to this project as well, the first phase.
And they are building a 200-plus million dollar building, so that, I mean, that, that's the plan. So that will, I'm assuming that's fairly fee-heavy on getting building permits and such, and then it'll be a nice tax base going forward.
I have a question.
You're from where?
What happens if they get all this money and they decide not to do the project?
That's why we're doing this in, in steps and with one of the primary steps being them getting through their test at INEL. And that happens either the first quarter or the second quarter. I don't know if they have an exact date yet.
First quarter of '26.
So, so let me make sure I understood this. Sometimes I'm hard hearing on these things, especially when it comes to giving money. You want us to donate, the county to donate 800 to a million dollars, 800,000 to a million dollars?
No, we'd like you to donate, commit to 250 or up to 250. And we're going to try to raise the rest from Barnum and then from other stakeholders.
Including EDJPB, City of Casper, including Demands Casper. So we have a, we have several people, and it helps our application to show that solidarity when we do apply for it. So to answer your original question, council member, this is gonna go toward the infrastructure out there for future development of commercial property. And that won't go away, right? It'll, it'll, you'll have that infrastructure in for another business if, for whatever reason, Radiant, in your example, pulls out and decides not to do it.
Well, one thing haunts me. You guys asked us to give money to an airline. And I really regret voting for that. Wish I could take that vote back. Because nothing came of it, and we spent the county's tax money, and a lot of taxpayers still let me know they aren't happy with that vote. So what I'm trying to figure out is why I should vote for giving you 250,000 here with really not much in writing and not knowing whether the project's gonna go or what is gonna go. I'm waiting really kind of to hear what the town of Barnum wants to do. If they, if their people have no objection to this happening out there, that's a really important thing for me to understand. And at this point, and then I see this letter down here that you want the commission to sign that says this, the second paragraph, is this 200 million dollar investment and the 250 permanent jobs it will generate represent one of the most promising industrial expansions in Natrona County. I don't know if that's really gonna happen. I don't know if that's true. I don't know if they can, if there's 250 people, they can even find that would want the jobs. I don't know whether they're gonna spend 200 million. 200 million is a lot of money. I've seen other projects that we've approved, like these windmills that are dying out here on the ridge. And that, I've really been hit lately, gentlemen, by our taxpayers saying, we, we just really don't approve of you guys giving our tax money away without having more knowledge in this matter. And I have to say now, I, I, I think obviously it's a good idea if it's, if it all works out. And it doesn't have so many people upset. They don't want radiation, say, out in their neighborhood. But at this point, I have to admit, I can't vote on this. I just don't have enough knowledge. I'm gonna abstain from voting on any of this until I get more knowledge. I really wanted to talk to a nuclear engineer, not that I'd understand much of he said, but maybe he could put it in a way I could understand it. But I hear these numbers thrown around all the time. And I, my experience since I've been on this commission, I don't ever see those numbers.
So
I see the numbers where we, we pay money out and then say, oh, no, boy, no, we're not gonna get the Reno deal. We're not gonna get this. We're not gonna get that. Yeah, we paid, you know, two million dollars and we get nothing. But people have sat there in that chair, oh, this is gonna be great. We're really, really hot on this Reno airshow thing. We really think we got a chance. And there never was a chance. We never got it anywhere. And so I'm skeptical of these numbers, only of the numbers. The idea? I wanna see manufacturing here in Natrona County. I wanna see jobs here in Natrona County. I wanna see our county thrive and all of that. I don't like doing it with tax dollars. That's my thought at this point.
Sure, and, and a lot of those numbers, Mr. Chair and Commissioner are based off like the Mesa project, which Advanced Casper was helpful in, in helping Evansville build out the infrastructure for that new campus that they're building. The letter that you have in front of you, we have a similar letter that was signed and sent to us from Mesa in support of that project, also from Automation Electronics, also from HEICO. So private sector is behind that. And so those, those, those dollar figures are, are based off what's happening currently, and this is for another project to bookend our community. So they're not, they're not too far out there, I would say.
Mr. Chairman. I think that the, it'd be appropriate for us to submit this letter, which does not have a specific monetary commitment in it. I, I, I would have counterpoints to Commissioner Laird's, some of the statements with respect to Reno and with respect to the MRG, but that's really not in, in front of us, so I'll talk with him offline and give him kind of a different perspective on that. But I, I think this is an investment for substantial economic growth in Natrona County, in an area specifically, I think, that contemplated this kind of development. And so I, I'm supportive of the investment that doesn't, this, this grant doesn't go to a private company. It, it goes into these lands and makes it developable for these guys. And if they don't show up, or if that doesn't materialize, it'll be ready for the next guy, I think, making it an easier opportunity for the next guy to come in, and it'll be kind of turnkey. So the only thing I'm, I'm maybe not as comfortable with is the specific dollar amount of up to $250,000 committing that today. If it's $800,000, I did the math, if it's 25% of that, then that's $200,000. And if it's $900,000, then it's 25%, then it's $225,000. So what I'm hearing, based upon a lawyer's, a recovering lawyer's math, is more than 25%. So what I'm hearing, based upon lawyers, a recovering lawyer's math, is more than twenty five percent, um, being requested of us. And we don't have assurances yet that the other communities are gonna do their fair share. What I might be more interested in is a, a percentage or some sort of condition, conditioned upon, especially Barnum. Barnum needs to be financially committed to this. I'd like to see the City of Casper committed and maybe Mel's, but, but in any event, at least Barnum. And then kind of hitch our wagon to that whole, we're in this together. So those are just comments. I don't know if you have a response to that, but that's, that's where I'm at right now.
I'll tell you, I feel the same way. I don't have any problem with the letter, but the commitment right now as far as funding goes is something that we need to look at. Right now, we're in our budget. Looked at different numbers, and right now, we need to find out where we're gonna be before we can commit anything. And that's my personal feeling on that. So, but I do, I, I do think that it's a, a good project. I, I do agree that that's gonna open that area up for future development, whether Radiant goes in there or whether somebody else goes in there, having the utilities there. I don't have any problem with that. But as far as the commitment to the, the funding right now, I'd like to see some of the other groups have skin in the game before we jump into it.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, and, and Commissioner. Uh, the timeline that we're working under was dictated by the Business Council. And so I also, with that in mind, and that knowing the first person who talks always loses in a negotiation, we had to come up with something. But I think a willingness to show, a willingness that we could demonstrate in that application that the, the county would be a participant, I think, uh, would suffice at this time. I completely empathize.
And, and I do feel strongly that we should financially participate. It's, it's the amount. Uh, and that's, that's where I think I can get more comfort as, as you all develop, you know, with, with the other groups and, and the other municipalities and towns.
Mr. Chairman.
Fisher Mill.
So as you say, the first person that blinks or says something, unfortunately, we're the first person.
Yeah.
I don't think we're gonna blink.
So the question, question I have is, we do a commitment or, or whatever, say we do. Think you're hearing, most of us support the project, or the concept of a project up there. Say we wanna participate or, or whatever in the development for that area for, for business to go in, and you're asking for commitment. If no one else commits, where does that leave us?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, I, I think that we could put that in that verbiage, right? If, if we fail to raise any other dollars that you don't, you're certainly not gonna be on the hook for the entire application, right? The county, that is. Uh, so I think we could put that in, in that agreement.
I think that might help alleviate some concern.
And, and also the not to, not to exceed the twenty five percent. Because we have, the eight million is a preliminary number. Uh, we, we don't know that that's gonna be the, the end number. So if it goes to ten million, it's two fifty, it stays at eight, it's two hundred.
Happy to do that. Again, it, it's the timeline is now, and that's, again, dictated by the state, so, or Business Council specifically. Uh, and to an earlier question for you, um, Commissioner Laird, uh, there is gonna be a nuclear scientist here tomorrow from Radiant. They're doing a project down at the, uh, science zone, so they'll, they'll be available.
I'll invite him, 'cause I've got a meeting with him. I'll invite him.
Time is that?
I'll, I'll talk to you about it.
We'll get you right in front of all the.
Good, I'll come.
The nuclear physicists.
The, uh, the thing is, is that I'd be more apt to vote for giving you money if you get it out of the city first.
Which town of Barnum or City of Casper?
All of the above.
And Barnum, especially Barnum, because.
Yeah, particularly Barnum.
Barnum, people all rise up.
But this is gonna help.
And say they don't want it, then I don't know what to say.
Absolutely. Uh, it, and it, that's simply, again, the timeline that was dictated to us by this application and how soon we could get on the calendar. So seven o'clock this evening, we'll be, I'll be at Barnum making that ask. So we'll, we should have a, if, if I don't come back, it's, you know, the pitchforks and torches got me.
Interested in knowing what happened.
Commissioner Nicolason.
So I'm not a property tax expert in any stretch, but my understanding is that the county's share of the property taxes is more significant if this remains unannexed from the town of Barnum. I don't know what the numbers are on that. I don't know if, um, counties and towns can enter into gentleman's agreements, um, ladies and gentlemen's agreements. But I'd be pretty disappointed if, if we committed, say, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars, and this were annexed next year. So I don't know exactly how that message can get through, but, but that's an observation, I think, more than anything.
I, I, I feel like we can negotiate that as we, again, I go back to this timeline, and the only reason we're here for the ask is because the application is due this week. But there's a ton of nuances that need to be ironed out, and I, I, I'm confident that, uh, we can get that figured out if we just get monetary commitment, like, hey, we will participate in this project, both in our support of Radiant and monetarily, that, that would suffice for our application to then address the other issues.
Any other questions? I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Okay, at this point in time, I would, uh, accept the motion to go into executive session personnel.
Still moved?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. All right, we are now in executive set.
All right, we were back in session. Madam County Attorney, would you like to give us an update?
I can't think of anything else I'd rather be doing. Commissioner Chair.
Thank you.
Good afternoon for the legal update today. I do have a few items on the list. We sort of talked about the Title 25 contract. Oh, let me back up. We, I am moving to, or we have removed from the agenda, I apologize, the 2025 Hearing Officer Contract and the contract with Karina Ostberg. The reason we are doing that is there was one clause that all of us had been working on, and we need to withdraw those and make sure we have the correct contract. So the resolution for Ms. Ostberg is still in, or on the consent agenda, but we've pulled out the two contracts.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Counsel, so the Resolution 15-25 is still on the agenda, consent agenda?
Yes.
So you're doing that because she started yesterday?
Yes.
Do we need to refer to a contract even though it's not in place yet? I mean, we did have the contract, then you told us we're going to take it out because of that one provision.
Right.
Do we need to make some sort of indication that, and according to such further terms as may be agreed in writing by the parties?
Sure, we can do that as well.
No, if we need to, but I just wonder.
Those are the, that resolution is similar to the other ones for special deputy attorney? Not that that means they're absolutely correct and can't be changed. If you would feel more comfortable, we can add that.
Well, we're contemplating entering into an additional agreement with, I guess, two-page agreement. So we ought to, I would think, reference it, at least generally.
Okay, we can do that. And then with respect to Judge Brooks, I have not discussed this with him because, quite frankly, I thought we had already signed this, and I just didn't think about it until I saw it. And so I will have to speak with him about that as well. I'm sorry, no, no, sir. Judge Brooks did in April. I just thought it had already been on an agenda, and I will need to talk to him about that. I don't know if that will change things or not. Okay, so with respect to the Title 25s generally, yes, there's going to be a transition, but I think it's going to go well. Ms. Ostberg is a good attorney. She wants to do these. She has the passion. She's willing to do all the paperwork, all the reporting. So the Title 25s are in good hands. You know, sometimes change is hard for people. And on May 20th, at the May 20th meeting, Appian Way is on, the vacation for Appian Way is on the agenda. And then with respect to road projects in the works, we have several of those, but we are waiting either for a survey or for records, but they're in the works. And then May 12th, the PRISM, there's a hearing regarding PRISM. Our counsel is appearing via Teams, and it's regard, it's in regard to several different motions. I know one for sure would be the state's motion to dismiss. I've been in contact with Eric Nelson regarding the land swap and the short-term lease. They're working on it. And then with respect, with all, respect to all the contracts that we need for budget, I believe Ms. Good has all of those finally, or at least all the numbers. So I've been working with her. That's it for now, at least with you all.
Okay, all right. We will be moving the next executive session to the end of the meeting. It's, it won't be at five o'clock, so that will be at the end of our meeting tonight. That we'll go into it after, we'll go into that after public comment and the commissioner comments.
Thank you.
We'll go into the executive session at that point in time. So we will be moving forward. Has anybody else got anything else that we need to discuss? Has anybody else got anything else that we need to discuss? Well, at this time, we have, we are removing Resolution 1425 and 1325 from the consent agenda, and it will be heard independently, voted on independently. We got anything else that we need to address? With that being said, we can go ahead and move into on the agenda. Make a motion to, do I have a motion to approve the remaining items? Go ahead. Yeah, no, yeah, well, I'll go ahead and do that. I'll go ahead and do the announcements, so we'll go ahead and move into our regular meeting. Michelle, you look like had a question. They're all signed? Yes, yes, no, they're all signed, and I have them right here in front of me, so I'm gonna go ahead and announce those right now. This year, we had a, probably the most impressive group of individuals that I've seen since I've been on the commission that have applied for the Board of County Commissioners Scholarship. We went through a lot of deliberation, we looked at a lot of different things, and I can honestly say that I was a tiebreaker on a, on a few of these, but they were very good applicants this year. The first one we have is gonna be Emerson Levine. And this is something that we haven't had in the past, but we actually had a pair of twins that applied this year, and they're both very competent and did very well. First one is Riley Thompson, and the second one's Addison Thompson, that will be receiving those awards from us, and I will be at the, their award ceremony next Monday night and presenting those to them. So all very impressive young people of our community. And I think it made it very difficult to go through. We had, we had a lot of really good candidates this year, a lot of really good ones, and it was tough to make that decision. So probably that, so. Okay, we will move on to the approval of the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the two items removed.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the two items removed.
And modification of the contract.
And modification to contract.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that. To clarify, so we have items, well, we took off A, so we have B, C, D, and G that remain on.
Yes. That is correct. So, okay, with that clarification, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, discussion of Resolution 14-25, establishing a vehicle and weight limit on County Road 503. Entertain a motion or discussion. Just for the record, Commissioner Coats has recused himself for conflict of interest.
Well, I'm for the resolution, so I'll make a motion to pass the resolution to establish vehicle weight limits on County Road 503, also known as Coats Road.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay, the motion fails due to a second. Okay, we'll move on to Resolution 1325, emergency resolution, temporarily freezing acceptance of wind and solar applications while referring it back to plan and zoning commission for consideration. Any discussion? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move that we pass that resolution.
Okay. Do you have a second? Not having a second, that motion also fails. At this point, we will move into so we have the license, who we need to, that's, that was on the consent? Yeah, so that was taken care of. So at this point in time, we'll move into public comment. Do we have any public comment? Please state your name and address.
My name is Susan Martin, I live at 15606 Bates Creek Lane, and I'm here to talk about property tax. I got my assessment last week, and for the first about 15 seconds, I was very happy because it had dropped about $400, $500. And then I realized after more detailed looking, they had increased my property value about $130,000, which means in two years, I will be paying over $2,000 or more extra a year for my property tax. It went down because there are exemptions that are put on for this year and next year. It's called a homeowner's exemption and a residential exemption, those that go away in two years. And the homeowner's exemption, and this is per Tammy, who is a very nice lady, I talked to her for about two and a half hours. Next year, the homeowner's exemption is not gonna be automatic, you have to actually apply for that online, which is gonna hurt a lot of seniors. And we talked about that in her office for, for quite a while. So anyway, I went to all the property tax meetings. Dallas was there a lot, and we talked about the acquisition tax, and that was poo-pooed and a lot of rolling eyes. So Tammy told me that the only thing coming up, maybe there'd be something in two years on the ballot that we can all vote for, for a 50% off on all property tax. If not, basically, our property tax is gonna go through the roof. And it's just, the can has been pushed down the road, and Band-Aids have been put on it, and nothing has been fixed, basically. Second of all, everybody's, or a lot of people are interested in Radiant coming in, which I have no, I have no problem with Radiant coming in as long as, you know, it's safe and all that good stuff. I just wonder if anybody's thought about, if Radiant comes in and we have other high-tech industry come in, these people coming in are not gonna want $300,000 homes, they're gonna want $901.5 million into $2 million homes. I came from a place like that. My place was a sheep, sheep town, and basically, we had Amgen come in, which is a huge pharmaceutical company, and they basically built a city in my little town. And our $200,000 homes, they went up to a million to 1.5 million. And the only thing that saved us in those years was basically Prop 13, because it kept the property taxes down, which is an acquisition tax. And the exact same thing is gonna happen here. I lived through it for, I was there for 40 years, and I saw the change. Casper is just like the town I came from when I was a kid. And basically, if, if tech comes in like it is, if Radiant comes in, which honestly, I'm all for, I have two boys in, in tech, in the tech industry, and I'd like to keep them in Wyoming as long as it's safe, the nuclear and all that stuff. But I just wonder if anybody's thought about what happens when these people come in? I mean, it changes, it, it changes the dynamics of the property tax. And, and what gets me is we, we haven't even figured out the property tax for ourselves, let alone if we have more people come in from outside that are coming in from higher-end, you know, places that have, the homes are $2 million. These people will not want $200,000, $300,000 homes, they're gonna want over a million dollar homes. And what happens to the people in bar none? And I don't know if bar none, I'll be honest with you, is Neutronic County, but it's gonna affect everybody. Where I live, the only thing that has gotten better out where I, well, I can't say anything has really gotten better out where, where I live. I live halfway out to Alkova, I love it out there. I paid about minus, is it the better?
Did you hit the button?
I paid about $1,200 21 years ago when I moved to Bates Creek Lane. I'm now paying over double that, and I haven't gotten anything extra. The only thing extra I get is I see vehicles constantly going down the 487, onto the 220, onto the byway, through the whole summer, all day long, back and forth. That's all I've gotten out there. So in two years, if we don't have a plan, and we tried to get a plan, and nobody, I guess nobody cared. I mean, they just wanted to Band-Aid it up. If we don't have a plan, our property tax is gonna go through the roof. And if Radiant comes in and they, they hire people here, that's fine, but they're gonna bring in scientists, they're gonna bring in, that's what Amgen did. And you're gonna have people making $600,000, $700,000 a year, and that's the kind of homes they're gonna build, and that's the kind of property tax we're gonna have to deal with then. And we have, and the Band-Aids aren't gonna work, the Band-Aids aren't gonna work. So anyway, I just wanna let you know, I just wish we could look beyond our noses and look a little bit into the future, because I just don't see it. And I was at those meetings, every, every time there was a meeting, I stayed there for five hours, one of the meetings, and I got people rolling their eyes at us. It was pretty disgusting. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Greg Walker, 7000 Coats Road, Casper, Wyoming. I'm embarrassed for you today, I truly am. Anybody that thinks Coats Road shouldn't be weight restricted, I, I just can't understand why you couldn't get a second and restrict Coats Road from weight, overweight trucks. Well, no matter what goes on up there, we had 20,000 people sign a petition, and probably 80% of those people were concerned about the travel on Coats Road with gravel trucks. And now, maybe the Supreme Court will save us, 'cause they said that the state has jurisdiction over temporary use permit, but they don't over leases, and that may save us. But why not? And, and I don't understand commissioners being, accusing themselves. What, you don't have a skin in the game? I mean, let, let people accuse you of bias. But why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you second this and vote on it? I'd expose some of these commissioners for not supporting weight restriction. We've been through the economics. The retail guy up there, you can't have anything up there right now, because we've, we've prohibited it. But one could argue that the state has jurisdiction over the codes and zoning, and they can argue that, that's gonna happen. You, you can't have a convenience store up there. You, you can't have a lot of things up there if you go through that list. And, and I'm embarrassed for you, and I'm very proud of you, Commissioner Lehrer. I'm very proud of you for innovating and trying to prevent something that's gonna happen. And I heard somebody say earlier on the video that the only reason this come about, we're trying to prevent a gravel pit. You doggone right, we're trying to prevent what we have in Casper being destroyed. That's what we're trying to prevent. We got two 90-degree bins on that road. To heck with what, let's go through the economics right quick again, I got time to do that. Retail, you get 18 to 25 bucks a ton. The state gets 60 cents of that, 60 cents a ton. What does the county get? Zilch, nothing but expense. You think that that $250,000 is gonna be important? It'd be paltry compared to what you'll spend on Coats Road. And I know the promoter says, "Well, I'll maintain the road." I'd love to see the lawyer come up with a liability agreement for maintaining a Coats Road with gravel trucks bumper-to-bumper coming up and down that road. Can you imagine? That on the first S-bin, you come down the school section, and you gotta thread a needle to get through the cattle guard. Look at the people, the posts are all knocked off, they can't even put livestock in the school section right now, because everything's been knocked off. The, the telephone box, they quit repairing it. Now they put an orange sack over it, 'cause they're done repairing it. They can't keep up with it. Somebody's gonna be liable for deaths on that road. And this was one way you could have supported 20,000 people that signed a petition, and you failed to even get a second. I'm embarrassed. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I mean, it's Linda Vineyard, and I live on Coats Road. I also don't understand your reasoning. We live on one of those 90-degree turns. It's the first one, if you're coming south of the road, and the road then makes a left. And we live on that curve, and we have had three, three people run into our fence in the last three years. One lady, she says, "Well, the wind blew me." Okay, well, we were having quite a wind that day. But guys, this, have you driven on that road? You can't meet another car on that curve. There are people who walk on that road, there are people who like to jog on that road. There are, the National Guard uses that road to exercise on. There, I, I don't understand how you cannot see the safety issue for those of us who live on that road. It's a safety issue, guys, it's not just a road condition, it's a safety issue. I don't like people coming into, flying over our fence and landing up next to my house. It's frightening. And it's even frightening when, when cars come by and they leave this cloud of dust that you can't even breathe outside. I can't even imagine what a gravel truck would be like. I, I'm, I agree, I'm disappointed, I really am. I don't know that you really rationalize what's happening to us as as, as residents of that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Robert Strowman, I live on 4145 Coast Road. And I am in the city limits. And we had paid, had the road paved. Who's gonna maintain this? The contractors aren't, I'll guarantee you. Where I live, when I pull out of my yard, I can see down to CY. I can't see anything south. We've almost been hit numerous times by our neighbors not even, even driving the speed limits or twice the speed limits. So who is going to be held accountable for the deaths that are gonna occur? I am concerned, I've got five grandsons and God helps whoever hurts one of them. And I think everybody here feels the same way if it was their grandsons. I, I just can't imagine what is going through you guys' heads that you couldn't second this to help us residents that live on that road? Lived there all their life. And now all of a sudden, we're having a rug jerked off underneath our feet because you guys won't stand up and help us. I, I just don't understand it. It's sickening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, commissioners and ladies. My name's Walt Mershot, I live at 6670 Coats Road. Uh, I am here tonight, uh, telling you to, I really wish you would do something to stop this. I know you're saying it's a resolution to stop gravel mining. You're damn right. We are 20,000 people that don't want this. We voted for you. Listen to us, please. Try to do something for the people instead of whatever you discuss in the back room there. I have a, I have a, a point here. Mr. True said multiple times, he's gonna bring a million dollars to the state with this gravel money. He said he's gonna make 100 million, that's his business. But if he brings a million dollars to the state, when you have a chance, maybe you already did this, multiply how many trucks? Now, he is not going to use those great big double trucks, whatever they're called, Super H's. He can't navigate those. So he's gotta go to the tandem trucks. The tandem trucks are 35 to 50,000 pounds full of gravel. They hold 10,000 pounds of gravel. Take 10,000 pounds of gravel, times 60 cents for the state, come up with a million dollars, come up with a half a million dollars. It's gonna take a couple hundred thousand goddamn trucks. What's wrong with you? Think about that on that road? Think about it. It's just dumb. I really wish you would stand, sit back and look at this. This is a, this is a road that goes through residential area. People live there, terrible bends to go around. And yet you're thinking of letting this go through. You're disappointing to me. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nina Wass and I live at 371 North Minnesota, Casper. Um, we just wanna start with a prayer before we read our commitment here. Father, we come before you with love, honor, and respect for Neptuna County and the state of Wyoming, asking for your blessing, a freedom, of the purity of the Constitution to be delivered to our people here. And we ask in your name, Jesus. County Settlement Covenant, Neptuna County preamble. We, the sovereign people living on the land in Neptuna County, Wyoming, a free and independent state, in order to live together in harmony under common law of the Almighty Creator, to facilitate the avoidance of disputes, to facilitate the quick settlement of disputes which might arise to provide for organized offense of life, freedom, and private property, to protect and administer public property for the benefit of the inhabitants, and to make certain limited agreements with other settlements of sovereign people for mutual benefit, ordain common accord and recognition of the following.
My name is Joya Tyne, I live at 5179 Nash in Mills, Wyoming. Today we give notice, May 6, 2025. Comes now inhabitants of Neptuna County by absolute writ and habeas corpus and with absolute resolve and rebut. Rebut all corporate authority and with absolute resolve rebut all corporate authority. County Settlement Covenant in Neptuna County, original assembly and library of records on November the 25th, 2024. Gives this county settlement announcement. Neptuna County Settlement Covenant and in harmony with all 23 counties we find.
I'm Cindy Garvin, I live at 3530 Aspen Lane. Article 1, by Almighty God granting us freedom by unanimous decree, the local peoples in local peaceful law assembly in settlement covenant in Wyoming, a free and independent state, a member with other free and independent states, also known as republic for the United States of America, set forth the following affirmations. Section 1, local people and family of man and woman centered in Almighty God, live on local land and use wayland in people jurisdiction and grace affirmed by the authority of the unanimous Declaration of Independence circa 1776 and the Bill of Rights Articles 5th, 7th, 9th, 10th, 11th, 1787 to 1791 and ratified in 2024 and beyond, beyond the reach of predator others, and also living in friendship and in peace treaties, 1789 to 1791 and beyond, beyond the reach of predator others and also affirmed by the 1890 Wyoming Constitution and the Covenant of Neptuna County, Wyoming, a free and independent state, circa 2024. Neptuna County is now de jour on the land.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Molly Miller and the address is 5279 Chuck Wagon Trail, Casper, Wyoming. That's in Webb Creek. We've reported and you've heard all kinds of reasons why we would like to have the weight limit set. But what I don't understand, and I wish I could ask you, is why are you against that? I mean, we think we know why it would be a good thing. But we don't know why you don't think it would be a good thing. Could you explain that to us? What happened at your meeting that, um, was overpowering? That made this not wanna go through? Can you answer that now?
No, go ahead.
Thanks for coming. So the, these decisions aren't light decisions, rest assured. So I live on Coats Road, my kids play on Coats Road. So this affects me and it affects me majorly. However, when we make decisions that are feelings-based purely, it causes heartache for the county at large. Now, there's a process that you go through when we want to establish weight limits on roads. Otherwise, it appears to be arbitrary and capricious. Now, that could have been done here. That very well could have been done. We could have followed that process and we could have drafted something. We could have gotten with road and bridge. We could have studied the road and we could have said, yes, this, for these specific reasons, these regulatory reasons, as set out in 10 Circuit case law from the state of Wyoming in a 1980s case, that we could have done these things and we could have put restrictions on. Without doing that, this is purely to be viewed as an arbitrary and capricious matter that doesn't pass muster. So we have to protect the county as much as we have to protect the residents. So that's, for me, that's where I would think that these gentlemen are coming from. I recuse myself in this because, you know, I stand to benefit from this directly. My family stands to benefit from this directly. It's something that I've spoke on as a citizen. It's something that my family's spoken on. So, you know, that said, for months during this last year, at, at times, different commissioners were asked to declare, you know, conflicts and all these things. And when they didn't, people were upset. So I declared a conflict, be upset. But we have to set a standard and that's, that's the standard I chose to set tonight.
Okay. Is that, all of you agree to that?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fill in a little bit. Um, because as a chairman, you usually don't make a second. I actually support this. We actually had language in there that actually said that we were going to study it. This was a temporary change. It wasn't a permanent change, it was a temporary change so that we could actually get this studied by road and bridge. So we had confirmation, we had evidence to support this decision. Because of that, I did support it. Um, I understand what Commissioner Coats is saying. Um, but I don't believe that it was arbitrary or capricious. I think this is something that has been identified by the public, that has been brought to us repeatedly and it started a long time ago. And I do have, that, that first half mile in there, the asphalt will not hold up to it. We had testimony from the previous manager for the city of Casper saying that that asphalt will not hold up to, to heavy truck traffic. Part of that is going through and getting that study. So, um, that's the reason why I supported this. But without having additional, making a second, we didn't have the votes to carry it. Um, but I, I do, I do support that and I do believe that it was the right thing to do.
Well, I live in, um, Webb Creek and, um, we do have a weight limit of 3,000, 30,000 or whatever that is, okay? And then there's exceptions, like the garbage truck goes around, which is like once a week. Um, and then there was some rocks that were being hauled out and they got an exception to that, you know, a couple of times, not many times every day. When our house was built, we had to have some of the dirt removed. And we weren't allowed to have a gravel truck come and get the dirt. It went out in little, little trailers, sending several little trailers. But, so, okay, so we had that. And so I don't understand why we have these restrictions someplace and we don't have them other places. It's just my opinion. Thank you.
Commissioner Lehrer?
So, um, I, I did a little legal research and I found a definition if you have a conflict of interest. And I did send it to Mr. Coats because I knew he was struggling with the issue. His last name is Coats, he lives on Coats Road and that kinda thing. So I, I haven't argued with him about his position. The rule says this, a personal or private interest, and it says this, is an interest that provides the public official, which would be commissioner, a greater benefit or a lesser detriment than it does for a large or substantial group or class of persons who are similarly situated. Now, that's interesting language. I'm gonna give you my interpretation of that. I'll read it again. Is an interest that provides the public official a greater benefit or lesser detriment than it does for a large or substantial group or class? So the issue would be if Mr. Coats voted to, to put a weight limit on this road and of course, he's afraid his kids would get run over and who wouldn't be in this kind of a situation? Or damage to your property or any number of things? So, uh, is it, is it, is it a greater benefit or lesser detriment than any of the other 20,000 people that signed that petition? Or that the people that live on the mountain? Or do they all have the same problem? Because if it's all applies equally, then if he votes, it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a, uh, issue for him because he isn't getting something worse or better out of the situation by voting on it. It was something that, let's say, just as an example, if he voted against it, uh, he would get $50,000, that isn't happening. Uh, or if he voted for it, he'd get $50,000 that other people wouldn't get. That isn't happening. He has the same complaints you all do, I would assume. I mean, I know his dad doesn't want the road to be used this way. At least that's what I, he told me at one time. And his dad's the one, he gave me the information about, uh, the fact that the statute says, Wyoming statute says, that you can't have mining interests within 300 feet of a house. Now, is the trucking used there that's coming within 25 feet of a house? Fall under that? That'll be a question for the Supreme Court to decide. Because if it, if it is, if they're part of the mining operation, then they can't drive their truck that close to those houses. Now, I think that, I'm glad you all came here to explain the safety issues here. Because I'm guessing that all of you who have grandchildren and children and you live on Coats Road, you're all in the same place that Mr. Coats is in. But he's a pretty honorable man. I, he's really impressed me, he's a good young man. And these are the kind of things that you have to decide out of your heart to some extent. I mean, I know a lot of politicians that this kind of thing wouldn't even den them. They, I always remember the, the place where I go is I, I remember the preamble. A government of the people, for the people, and by the people. I had a constitutional, uh, dean who imprinted that in my brain. Because if we don't do this for the people, then we just ought to not be here. So, so I try to pay attention to what the people want. Now, you have different people wanting different things. But, uh, this, this deal that you guys are involved in, I've never seen a 20,000-person petition before. I mean, the public is really well-spoken. I've seen these signs all over town. I've been on Coats Road, I've looked at there, I've seen the 90-degree deals. There's, there's no big trucks that should be running up and down that road for any reason. Now, I'm giving you the reason that I voted for it, I'd continue to vote for it. And I don't know, maybe the other commissioners will speak to it or not, I don't know. I think you're, you're entitled to a response though. Because they were elected by the people, for the people, and of the people, just like I was. But we're all a little different, we all have different opinions and, you know, I don't, I, I've, uh, I, I believe I knew how this was gonna turn out tonight. But what I say is, you're, you're people who don't stop. And I wouldn't stop here because I think it's a righteous thing, gravel pit or no gravel pit, that those kinda trucks shouldn't be running up and down that road. Period, any kind of them. Whether they're gravel or anything else. Unless they get a permit from Mike Hagler's office or for us because they have to haul something heavy up there and they're gonna do it at a reasonable speed and all that. There's no speed limit up there, there's nothing. And so I don't think this thing is over. These are all good men here on this commission. And I think when they hear you all, they, they see, they may see it a little differently and they may see, let their heart get in, into the thing and realize that, uh, I agree with you, it's the right thing for us to do. I've always felt it was the right thing for us to do. But I gotta have two more votes than just mine. But that's how I, how I view this whole thing. But I can't speak for, for the people that didn't vote for it. Other, Mr. Coats is giving his, his thought and I, I'm not gonna argue with him about it. Uh, I, I, I guess that you can keep asking and maybe you'll get an answer and maybe somebody will change their mind.
The other public comment.
My name is Jane Ifland. I live at four oh six East Eighth Street. Pretty close to the middle of town. Um, I've got bad lungs. Sure loved all those cigarettes I smoked in my twenties and thirties, but boy, do I ever wish I hadn't smoked them now. What I see coming is that amount of heavy traffic is gonna lift dust. And the prevailing winds are from southwest. And I anticipate that some of that dust is gonna enter my lungs to my detriment. And I wish that those of you who were unable to see your way clear to pass this resolution would reconsider your positions because the twenty thousand number starts to talk about the people who do not live on Coats Road, who don't wanna see the visual damage and who don't wanna breathe the consequence of one guy making a lot of money. Thank you.
Good evening, Commission. Rosemary Xaban, Machona County resident. So to speak on arbitrary and capricious, what is arbitrary and capricious are property taxes this year? If you, if people look at their, uh, fair, fair value, your property value without residential structures on it should always be less. Right now, we're getting real close to teetering or going over. That is arbitrary and capricious. So if you're seeing that on your assessments, you should be appealing. And it should be written on your appeal that it is for the, for the reason of arbitrary and capricious, that your values are that way. Because as the lady said that was up here, when these exemptions go away, we're in for a world of hurt. And the people have asked for property tax relief and reform for eight, for eight years. So we haven't seen anything done with that. Um, Wyoming constitution also mandates that taxes will be equal and uniform. So you can look at your LEAs and um, determine whether your neighbors are being valued similarly or if numbers are being pulled from the sky, I guess, around the state. We're seeing all kinds of different numbers. Um, I did not watch the commission meeting. I was in Midwest playing in the Mud West. So you guys voted on just the Coats Road, putting a weight restriction on county road is all. Nothing to do with Advanced Casper at this point, correct? And is that gonna be a, a notice when you guys decide to decide on that? Are, are, are you gonna have a discussion again in the future about this?
If we don't have the votes to pass it, I don't know if we will.
I, I'm talking about Advanced Casper.
Advanced Casper. We will wait. We voted not to, not to provide any financial numbers at this point in time, that all we're doing is supporting letter of support to, uh, move forward to, with the project.
Okay, so it's done for now, but maybe not in the future?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm going to bar none too.
Because we asked them that we're the first one. Need to know more and there's other things that we have to take into consideration before we commit to anything.
Okay, well, there's people up there, bar none right now, that are screaming bloody murder. So, um, I guess that's probably all. Other than perhaps, Mr. Nicolason, did you vote on the gra- the, uh, county road? No vote?
There was on the second, so the vote died.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, one more time. Anybody else? Move to Commissioner comments. Mr. Nicolason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so property tax, uh, issues continue to be a problem for our county and our state. Um, the legislature provided a little bit of relief. And it, I think the comments tonight were right on with, you know, it seems like they went down. But when you look at it a little more closely, um, there still is an upward trend. Um, I still think that it's a, um, the entire system, um, within the CAMA system, and I've been talking about that for years, that, and it seems like nobody in Cheyenne wants to address that. You know, that, that we can't have, uh, an appraisers appraisal of our specific property stand up against this computer system which throws, you know, a whole bunch of, um, properties that may or may not be similar into the mix. And, and there's this upward trend. So I think it's gonna continue to be a problem for, for our state. I think it'll also, um, uh, be interesting when we come to our budget session, what property tax revenues, um, are, are gonna be like for the county. I know there's a housing shortage. And I think people are trying to work on that, create, um, workforce housing, both on the lower end of, you know, what, what they call affordable homes these days. They're like three hundred and fifty or four hundred thousand dollar homes, which blows my mind. Um, on up to, you know, executive housing. So, um, people are working on that, including with the state of Wyoming, to, um, fund, uh, grant fund or provide low-interest, um, infrastructure, loans. Most of the public comment tonight, though, was on the, um, weight restriction on Coats Road. And it, it's, I, I think some of the takeaways are that tonight isn't the end. But if we would have moved forward with, um, this resolution, which I think was half-baked, um, someone would have taken it to court, I'm pretty sure. And we would have gotten beat on summary judgment or before on a motion to dismiss, because we hadn't gone through the process right. We hadn't established actual facts. Now, it says in that resolution that the county finds that. You've heard Commissioner Laird and me and others talk before about, if, you've, you've gotta have evidence to support your findings and conclusions. So, so whether it's through weight restrictions or whether it's just through the protection of the public safety, health, safety and welfare, w- we can do a lot to restrict or prohibit use of that road by gravel trucks. But we better do it the right way or we're gonna have case precedent that says, that, that rules against us. And we're not gonna be, we got, I think we've got one bite at that road apple and this wasn't it. All right? So, y- you know, I, I happen to have a whole bunch of training as a real estate lawyer and have a lot of litigation experience. And, and it would have been, in my humble opinion, exceedingly difficult for this county to have defended passing this resolution tonight. Okay? So that's why I didn't second it. And that's why I would have voted nay had it come to that. But that doesn't mean I'm a nay next time. Or the next time, when we have addressed this, whether it's through weight restrictions or somebody actually has, uh, an application in front of us. So I, I look forward to the continued conversations because I, I do know that th- this community, overwhelming majority that at least I've heard from, have said no to a gravel pit up there on Coats Road. Um, I do appreciate the comments and I agree with the comments that Commissioner Coats made tonight with respect to case law. And, and when he's talking about arbitrary and capricious, that's kind of what I'm trying to explain to you as well. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Millen.
I wanna thank you all for coming out. I understand your frustration. I don't have a whole lot more. I'm not gonna waste your time when, uh, Commissioner Coats and Commissioner Nicolason have so thoroughly, uh, stated what the problem was. I really, really think if we are gonna do this, we have to do it right. So that's where it stands right now. Not in the future, just because we didn't have a vote on this. It just, it's there. We need to do the process. We need to do the process appropriately. And then we can have that discussion. But I really do appreciate you all coming out. Um, so I've been kinda concerned about, uh, notice the, our letter of intent from, uh, the state lands and investments on the state of Wyoming concerning a large acreage, uh, sale to a private individual, private, uh, business, private, private. The sale is for three thousand one hundred and sixty-two point nine five acres of public property, state lands. The state and everybody else keeps using the example of, hey, federal lands need to go to the state because the state knows how to take care of them. The state will never get rid of them. The state won't this, that, or the next thing. This is a straight-up sale. It's a, what they call a disposal. It's not an exchange or anything else. It's a buyout. This, however, where those state lands are located versus that federal property versus public property or private property by the state selling that property that is being proposed will essentially land lock that federal property. No more access, land access to it. You have to fly in with a helicopter or whatever. Or get chummy with the landowner and or pay trespass fee. This would lock out that federal property of approximately forty-five hundred acres. That's a lot of acreage. There's some good hunting back there. So I'm very concerned about it. I did talk to, like I said, I called him. And, uh, right now it's in the, the portion of, uh, confidentiality. They couldn't discuss it. But it is on their, on the website as to where it is, the, the township and range. You can see the adjoining private property and you can see who owns that. Who'd benefit from it. It'd essentially make that forty-five hundred acres private property. You wanna have access to it. I think that's a shame that the state says on one hand that, oh, we'll protect the private property. It belong, it, it should be the, or the public property because the federal don't, you know, they're, they're managing from back east. And that's true. It, it's, I hate that myself. But when the state, on the other hand, goes, oh, hey, but we're gonna sell all this property. One-time gig. Getting money. I, I, hypocrisy is just astounding. That's all I have.
Mr. Coats.
So recently, we did our first round of interviews for the Parks Trustees Board. We had six really, really good interviews. It was really good to see the interest. And I feel like we made progress. Within that, I would like to see that progress continue and some member of the public occupy that board. There is some internal disagreement about how and when that should happen. But it needs to happen regardless. So in the efforts of moving this forward and getting someone on the Parks Board, following the meeting on the eighth, I would, I am choosing to vacate my position on there so we may appoint one of the six people that we interviewed. That's all I have for tonight.
Commissioner Laird.
You know, Casey really is a good guy. He really is. What he just said too, is prompting me to think about it myself. Uh, I hate to tell you guys how long I've been a lawyer, but it's been since nineteen seventy-one. And, uh, I had a partner who's deceased now, great guy. Name was Dick McCarty. And he says, you know, Dallas, it just doesn't hurt to show up and ask. You know, because we can sit around and, we'd sit around and think about all the reasons we could lose a case. And then we'd talk about losing the case and Dick could go out and ask and he'd get it settled somehow. And we were pretty young when all that was going on. And then I, I got a couple of cases. People said, you can't win. You can't win those cases. And I won them. Won a lot of cases. People told me I couldn't win. I always felt you couldn't win them if you didn't do it in the first place. So like Coats Road, you put a weight restriction on Coats Road. It brings out whoever's against it. They file something. And it meanders around for a couple of years in the Supreme Court. And who knows what happens in between that period of time? And when they rule, and they could rule that, uh, I, I think anybody that would hear what you all have said would see the problem up there. Now, probably we need a, we need a hearing where we have public comment before we vote on whether we should vote on the Coats Road matter. And, and do like you've done in the past where you bring in a doctor and you bring in somebody that knows something about mining and you bring in somebody that knows something about trucking and the noise and the, and the danger and all of that. And bring the, bring the pictures of the ninety-degree, uh, places in Coats Road and how narrow it really is and all of that. And then you kinda cram that evidence down somebody's throat. And then you get a weight restriction. So, so you gotta get your lawyer. You gotta lawyer. And he knows how to do cram downs. And then you get your information all, all out real nice and neat for the lawyers and the evidence is there. And anybody who goes up there could see it. I mean, you guys are in kind of a war here. And so, uh, you know, I've seen politicians my whole life, so have you, who vote for things they shouldn't have voted for. But they voted where their heart of hearts was. And what they knew to be a truth. And when you're fighting and you know you have the truth, you're gonna win. You'll win. You'll win if you're, if the truth is behind you. And what I've seen with the amount of support you have and what I've known about other cases that have blown dirt around that area up there and what is, the damage it's done to houses. And the realtors who've been in here and say, your house is gonna be worth less. You know, you just gotta fight. You gotta put on a boxing gloves and you gotta get after the program. And if people vote against you, maybe you ought to vote against them. Now, let me mention taxes. Uh, you're getting a lot of, uh, mishmash and sweet talk on those taxes. And they're going up. The lady who talked about, I, I know what happened in Boulder, Colorado. I know what's happened down in California. People paying twenty-five thousand for a house, selling it for two and a half million and moving here and buying it in a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house and retiring. retiring because all this stuff is moving in. Well, we've had it pretty good all these years. I remember my grandpa wanted, the town got up to 15,000. He wanted to put a fence around Wyoming, keep people out. So all of these things change and, uh, technology comes in and technology is changing and we're going to have to deal with it. We just can't be old fashioned about things and nix everything because it's just something that's never been done before. Because, you know, when we all finally close our eyes, who knows what the next generation is going to vote for? And what they're going to do and how they're going to look at everything. But I like Casper. It's always been small. No matter how many people have lived here and I was born here and, uh, as long as I'm on this commission, I'm going to vote for the majority of the people. Period. Unless I think they're completely outrageous and I try to talk them out of it. But nothing you've said is completely outrageous and I believe the truth has been said by each and every one of you. No question about it in my mind.
I wanted to, uh, address something Commissioner Mill said. And I agree that state lands should be classified as public lands. Unfortunately, I went to a state symposium on public lands down in Laramie and some of the appointed bureaucrats that are on those different boards made it very clear that state lands are not public lands. They were lands belonging to the school sections, the, to the schools and that belongs to the state and it's not open for public use. The only way that can change is changing the administration, changing some of our policies through some of the way we look at things and making sure that we have elected officials that agree that public lands, that school sections are public lands and they're, they should be there. Not only just, they're obligated by the constitution to make the most money they can off of them. But there needs to be some things changed in there as far as how we look at state school sections. The property up there at the end of Coats Road is just a prime example. There's a lot of different ones around the state in different places that are used by recreationalists, by different things. And there needs to be something that, that looks at what the, the best community, best, best practices for the community and not just for the schools. You look at how much recreation is done in these locations and how much recreation. I've heard a lot of that about lately, about, oh, we need to improve trails. We have all this stuff. We can bring people in. We can do things through tourism and everything else. You look at the locations that we actually have a lot of that and it's on state school sections. If we turn around and turn that into a gravel pit where people are utilizing things or we limit the application and the, and the accessibility because it doesn't make as much money for the state, who loses? We do. We as the public, we as the group lose. And we need to stand up and, and make that voice heard. That's something that I believe is very important that we need to do as individuals because some of the individuals that basically said that, um, are sitting in very high positions in our current administration. I learned a lot down there at that symposium. Uh, a lot about multiple use, a lot about trails, a lot about different things, different processes that we could do. But the one thing that we didn't answer, that wasn't answered, that it was just bypassed is how do we protect those, those resources so that the most people can get the most use out of it and the most good? That's something we have to look forward to and we have to work on because if we don't, we're going to lose them. The Kelly parcel, that's been in the, in the news for a long time, a lot of years. And they finally, you know, they did sell it to the state parks or federal. So it, it's going to be part of Teton. Fortunately, we retained some of our rights in there, but not all of them. We need to look at state lands and we need to make sure that they are utilized for the betterment of our communities and we need to be involved in those decision, those decisions that are being made on that level. We need to get involved in the sales of private, or those state lands that go to private property. I remember one several years ago on the east end of Muddy Mountain that created all kinds of problems. When the land over there, out there wanted to buy all that and traded for stuff that was basically scrub. It wasn't worth anything. We got that killed because we spoke up as a group in our community. So those are the kind of things we need to look, look at and we need to address that with our, our elected officials and we need to elect it with our state legislators to make sure that we get some of that stuff changed. And if that means that we change the constitution, which may be what it takes to do it, then we need to work on that, getting that initiative pushed through. We just changed the constitution on what we can do as far as investments go a couple of years ago in our last one. We can do that as the people, but we have to have people buying that to get it done. That, that's all I have tonight. Um, at this point in time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
So moved.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight.
Okay. All right. We're back in order out of the exec. We did take action on personnel and at this point in time we are adjourned.